Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon Fios, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Good evening, everybody, welcome. I'd like to call to order our Township Council Workshop Meeting Wednesday, August 6th, 6:00 PM, Town Hall. Ms. Lassina, could you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
I wish to make the following announcement to show compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975. Notice of this meeting was given by sending a notice on August 1st, 2014, to the Star Ledger, Courier-News, Scotch Plains Fanwood Times, stating that a meeting of the Scotch Plains governing body would be held on August 6th, 2014, at 6:00 PM, at the Scotch Plains Municipal Building, and by posting said notice on the Township website and bulletin board in the municipal building and filing the same with the Township clerk. If everyone would please rise for the pledge to the flag.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, is to the United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lassina, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gilanella, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. Vastin.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. The next item up on our agenda is a public comment. Anyone wishing to address this council may do so by coming forward, stating your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Elmer P. Terry, 1421 Rawway Road. I'm a member of the Shady Rest Preservation Committee, a nonpartisan group made of Republicans, Democrats, Independents, and some people who prefer not to have a political label of any kind. Our aim is to promote awareness of the Shady Rest history, not only locally, but throughout the state and the nation, and most importantly, the preservation of the building that is an irreplaceable icon representing its unique history and prominence in African-American society. It has been asked, what do we want? What we want is simple and easily accomplished if there's a will to do so, immediate action to repair the roof so the building does not endure another winter deterioration, and the taxpayers do not have to spend many thousands of dollars repairing the water damage over and over, instead of fixing the problem, as has happened over the last several years. What do we want? We want the recommendation of PBR Architects and Planners LLC, entitled "Short-Term Roof Replacement," implemented immediately at the reasonable estimated cost of $170,000. This would stabilize the structure, allow for continuing use of the building, and provide time for consideration, investigation, and finance of the rest of PBR's Concept Day, the total preservation and upgrade to the existing building. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out here.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Taylor. I live at North Avenue, Scotch Plains. I'd just like to ask the council, why has it taken a year to still be at ... oh, I'm sorry. Why has it taken a year to still have the same meeting? A year ago, we were still talking about architectural whatever, about the roof, and the roof has still not been repaired.
Well, I'm not sure, Ms. Taylor, if I can give you a satisfactory answer. What I'm hoping tonight is that we'll have an overview by the architect, which is council-approved hiring, that will finally get some action taken to preserve, to protect, that building.
Well, to this gentleman's speech, is the roof going to be done before the next winter?
I think that's a reasonable question, and it's one that I'm sure will be discussed tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Steve Price. I addressed this group a few months ago. To refresh your memories, I'm the person who applied for and got a certificate of eligibility for the Shady Rest Club House Building for the National Register of Historic Places. What that means is that it's the New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office, the authorities on the subject, saying that the building is officially eligible for the National Register. I spent five years managing a restoration project on the National Register site. I've worked with historic preservation architects. Barton Ross showed me the plan. He spent an hour and a half with me. He showed me the plan because I'm the person who got the certificate of eligibility. And I have no vested interest in this. I'm not getting paid by anybody. I haven't gotten a flat cent, nor am I interested in it. It's about preserving this rare, unique, important piece of history. This plan is a good plan. I've seen historic preservation plans. I have an educational credential in historic preservation. I've got experience credentials. It's an excellent plan. I would recommend going with the first option. There are several options. They are, but going with the first option, not only because it's the least expensive, but it's the truest to the building. And continuing to use the building for what it's been used for for many years, for local civic, social, and cultural groups to have their meetings and their functions. It's too important to lose, and I think that's something that too many people don't seem to understand. As somebody who's a member of the part-time education staff at the Metropolitan Museum of Art and teaches history as an adjunct at a state university, of course, I hear people talk about history all the time. And too often, I hear them talk about history as if it's segregated. Black history, women's history, Jewish history. We are one nation and one people. We have one history. American history. And this is a very important facet of it. It's like pieces of a puzzle. This is a very important piece of the puzzle. It's ... represents something very important, a real important cultural center for an important segment of our society, black society. The last time I was here, I recounted what was really my favorite story about Shady During the warm evenings, excuse me, in the spring and the summer, when those giants of jazz would play concerts there, people who couldn't afford to be members, black residents who couldn't afford to be members, and white residents who couldn't be members at all, of course, would gather on the road that runs right past the building, and they'd listen, and they'd dance on the street. Now, of course, they weren't dancing together with each other, because it was the 1930s, 40s, and 50s, and there were divisions in society that just wouldn't allow for that. Fast forward from that to today. My oldest of three children, a young man she's going to spend her life with, happens to be black. Nobody in his family cares that she isn't the same race as them. Nobody in our family cares that he's not the same race as us. He's a fine young man. He loves my daughter. In our generation, I'm 57 years old, in our generation, it would have been very difficult for those two kids to be together. And our parents, impossible. That's what Shady Rest represents. How far we've come, where we've come from, and how far we have come in society. It's too important to lose. I'm not standing here telling you you should pump millions, but there is alternatives. You've got immediate needs. You address your immediate needs up front. The roof needed to be replaced five years ago. I've been through that building from the top to the bottom. There are problems. That's the biggest one. That needs to be addressed up front, and then the other, step by step. Look at the plan. I've seen it. Go with the, my opinion, go with the first option. It's the least expensive. Like I said, it's the most true to the building. But a few months ago, this is what you were waiting for. You were waiting for the plan. No, we're not moving on anything until we have the plan. Here's the plan. Go with the plan. You hired a top-notch professional to give you a plan. You've got a top-notch plan. Adopt it and start moving. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
John Thompson, Redwood Road. I've wanted, I've read the plan through and through. I want to commend the architect on putting together a very detailed and very clear set of plans. My comment is on the four different alternatives in the plan that are being considered. I want to implore the Town Council to consider that Plan A is the plan we need to go with. It's the plan that the Preservation, Shady Rest Preservation Committee is advocating for. The other plans go up to $2 million above the cost of that plan and represent changes to the floor plan that are not being asked for, or complete destruction of the current building, which is definitely not asked for. Within that Plan A, there is, on page 184 and 185, I believe, a set of first-year, most-important changes that need to be addressed first, that total less than $200,000. I implore that the Town Council to do the responsible thing and fund that aspect of the plan initially now, and then in a year, we can see where we stand, and we can better prioritize the remaining issues that need to be taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Hickson. I live on Hunter Avenue in Scotch Plains, and I am the president of the Preserve Shady Rest Committee. I just want to say, everything that has already been said, our committee stands behind, and that we do want to consider using the first option, Plan A, to be the most cost-effective, and to also not change the building, to keep the building as close to what it is right now. The reason why I'm really here, though, is to thank Mr. Ross. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. A lot of us here thank you. I cannot begin to tell you how valuable that report has become to a lot of us. We have been digging and searching in history for a long time, and some of that history you've now closed some of the gaps for me personally. It alleviated a lot of the questions that I had, and, you know, and now I can move forward. And the news articles I'm still finding are still unbelievable, but I want to thank you on behalf of our town, and thank you on behalf of our committee. We appreciate ... We appreciate all that you did and all that I hope that you continue to do. As a final comment, I would like to see Mr. Ross continue his work and let him be the overseer or man in charge of the renovation and the, I should say, not renovation, but repairs, necessary repairs. The ones that are recommended, that John Thompson alluded to on the report, it's a short term where we're required, where he's at where Mr. Ross is asking that the six-month to one-year renovations be taken care of. And I would like to see Mr. Ross continue his work and allow him to be contracted or made an offer to oversee everything that has to be done under the Plan A option. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for that suggestion, and thank you for everything you've done.
I'm Tom Donatelli from Tax Circle in Scotch Plains, and I just would like to know, is after this presentation is presented, are we going to be able to ask questions regarding the presentation and the comments from the council?
I think that's a reasonable request. It's not on our program, but I would suggest to this council that we agree to listen to any comments following the presentation. Do we have agreement on that, council? Or do I need to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was painless. Seeing no one else coming forward, I thank everyone, I'm certain, on behalf of this entire council, for your very thoughtful, sincere commentary. This has been a long-going process, and hopefully, we are nearing the conclusion of what needs to be done and to get on to getting it done finally. With that, the next thing on our agenda is manage discussions items, of which, the Preservation Plan Architectural Study for the Shady Rest at Scotch Hills. We have with us Mr. Barton Ross, who's been properly and rightfully spoken of for all your outstanding work. I've read this report as well, and he did a whole lot of work for the other community, and I will say that I'm proud of what you did as well, personally. So with that, I will turn to Ms. ... I don't know why we're smiling on that, Mr. James. I hope I didn't say anything that offended you or anybody. But that's, I don't know, I don't know.
Right, you did a good job, I agree.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that. Mr. James, then, can you please introduce?
I think there's been enough introduction, all positive, for Mr. Ross. So with that, I'm just going to turn it right over to Mark. He'll go through his presentation, and I'll fill the mics back there.
Okay, thank you, Jerry, and I'd like to thank Ray Corio. I'd like to thank Jerry. I'd like to thank Ray Corio for assisting me gathering information. I'd like to thank the council for undertaking this important project. So thank you. And also, I'd like to thank all those members of the audience who also helped me along the way, providing articles and other pieces of historical information. So thank you. I'll speak for maybe 25 minutes. I'm just going to go quickly through the kind of the highlights of the plan and just kind of a chronological order of what took place, and then I know a lot of people have a lot of questions, so I'll try to be as brief as possible, but hit on the main point so everyone knows what was discovered during this process, so. All right, so we all know where the building is, and you'll notice that it's kind of almost in between Scotch Plains and Westfield, so a lot of the historical information actually came from Westfield, when you go back and have to dig in the archives and everything. So this is the executive summary, what I was hired to do, document and illustrate the historical and physical evidence, identify where changes can occur, and how much those changes would cost. And this was done through documentary research, onsite physical investigation with numerous other professionals, not just me, the graphic documentation that you see in the final document, the book, the PDF, and then the cost calculations, which I'm sure people will have questions on. So the historical overview, you know, I offered to possibly do this presentation again, either at a Shady Rest Committee meeting, or the Historical Society meeting, or, you know, another venue that we could go possibly more in-depth with the history and everything that was learned, since, you know, it's a very important building, and there's a lot of history over many, many decades. I started at the beginning, back in the 16, 1700s. The Tucker family, Warner Tucker is the grandfather of the man who built the house that became the Shady Rest, and his gravestone's actually in Scotch Plains Cemetery here. And so these are, you know, a lot of, we found all the images and a lot of the history of Mr. Shippen. Everyone knows his history and his illustrious career that's only now kind of coming to light and assuming its rightful place in history. Mr. Shippen, he was called Ship, and like I said, we could go through this history a lot more in-depth at another time. This is the USGA, which is finally now recognizing the contributions of all the early African-American golf pioneers, a painting that was done that included Mr. Shippen. The cultural significance, you know, this building carries with it a lot of significance, not only architecturally, but also in terms of events that are associated with the building and persons of importance associated with the building. Obviously, Mr. Shippen and Mr. Gordon, who's pictured on the upper left, who was one of the early presidents during the period of significance for the building, which we would say 1921 to '3 through 1937, '38. That's really the, probably the best-known period for the Shady Rest. There were so many national articles, as Mrs. Hicks was saying, we're still finding articles trickling in. I mean, it's amazing. There's hundreds of them that were all over the country, written about the Shady Rest during that time period, the period of significance. And we also have some early photos, and this is a year after it was constructed, and some of these early photos, including a lot of the stills that Dr. Landino used in the documentary, we can, we can really have an accurate picture of what the building did look like at the time, which is very helpful. So during its period of significance, we have some really good images, which will be helpful for whatever renovation or restoration takes place at this building. So there are a lot of historical maps that we are able to find. This is one of the earliest that actually shows a building at the location. This is the British officers in the Revolutionary War actually drew better maps than the Americans. So this is a very detailed map by Lieutenant Hills that was done during the Revolutionary War. Now, whether that's the actual house or not, you know, we don't know, but it is shown there. This is the 1850 Essex County Atlas, and that's Mr. Benjamin Losi's house right there, and that is the house. So this was 1850, so we know definitely it's there on the map. This is a slightly later view. This is R.R. Johnston, and you can see the size of the Shady Rest right here, and it's much larger than a lot of the other earlier homes. So we also know that that's the house. This was a 1929 aerial map of Westfield, actually. So just off the map is where the Shady Rest would have been. So unfortunately, we don't have a view of what it looked like in 1929. However, this map's very important, because it shows you in 1929 what the houses and the vernacular architecture looked like in the neighborhoods surrounding the Shady Rest. So I went through the complete chain of title of the property. So we know the property was owned by the Tucker family from the 1740s on, and that was passed down to son, Ephraim Tucker, and his grandson, Ephraim Tucker Jr., who eventually moved out to Ohio in 1808. So all the Tuckers went with him out to Ohio, and they're all buried out there. But we think Mr. Tucker Jr. is the one who actually built the house. And so it's not quite as early as the earliest surveys of Scotch Plains put it. They put it at like 1740 or 60. It was probably built by him around 1792, is what we discovered. And the Tucker family actually owned a couple farms down Jerusalem Road, so it was possible his house was the older one that was down the road. This is the will from Mr. Tucker Senior to Mr. Tucker Jr., dated 1798, and they, he definitely refers to his house, and this is the property boundaries that kind of go all past this throughout the chain of title. So we know 1798, the house was definitely standing. So I went through the complete chain of title that anyone could read or ask me questions on later. It went from the Tucker family to the Losi family to the Osbournes, and then to the Westfield Golf Club in 1900. The important one is this one, February 1923, Westfield Golf Club to the Progressive Realty Company, and we know that they had it from 1923 to 1938, when Scotch Plains took it over. So that's how we established the period of significance. So so many articles through the years, and I tried to capture as many as I could, and like I said, thank you to all those, you know who you are, who helped me try to gather all these wonderful articles that kind of span, you know, from the 20s all the way up to the 90s. And some have neat old images like these two. And then up through the documentary. The documentary was done in 1994, I believe. All right, so then I went into evaluations of conditions. So what exists out at the house presently? So we went through the architectural report, and you can tell that this is a very old house, because it has the Roman numerals. These are two Roman numerals from the entrance room when you walk in the lobby today, and these are carpenters' marks, and what they would do is they would mark each joists, and they would lay them out on a platform, and they go around each of the four sides, they mark each one, and that's how they knew which one went in what order, and then they'd pull it up. So they do that, it's kind of a platform building system. And this is the Baker House, which is at the end of Jerusalem at Mountain. So Mountain in Jerusalem, so this is right down the street, and this dates from 1789. It was documented by the Historic American Buildings Survey in the 30s. So this kind of gives you a sense of what the Shady Rest would have looked like in the 1700s, before it was obviously expanded, built up, the wings were added, and every other thing. The reason Habs would not have documented the Shady Rest is by this time, it was already the golf club, so it didn't look like what they were looking for in the 30s. These are two postcards. These are probably from the late 20s or early 30s. And these two postcards are really important, because this really shows what the building looked like during that 1923 to '38 period. And this is the dining room on the back, and actually, you can see all these windows. That was the end of the building when the Westfield Golf Club had it. And so then we know that when it was the Shady Rest, they built this dining room, and they also built that, the outdoor porch that is now gone. And this is a view from the front. You can see how it was more built up. There wasn't such a hill to get up to the building. Like this was all kind of on the level. And in doing the research, we know that originally, before it became the golf club, this was not the front entrance. The front entrance used to actually face Jerusalem Road, and then when it became the golf club, they needed parking, so it couldn't face Jerusalem, so they turned the whole building around circa 1900, when it became the Westfield Golf Club, and it was continued as the Shady Rest. So this is kind of the evolution of the house. So like I said, it started out as the Ephraim Tucker House. It was on the frontier around 1792, and that's based on dendrochronology, which I'll show you in a second. So it would have had a beehive oven and a very large cooking fireplace, and that was to keep warm as well as to cook, and the beehive oven was to make bread. So it was just a very simple, probably one room and one unheated bed chamber. And there's evidence of this that I'll show you. We actually found the fieldstone foundation for this little 20 by 26 building is still in the basement. So there are like, there are over two-foot-thick walls of fieldstone, very, very neatly dressed. So you can tell that in the colonial times, you know, they built like, like sometimes we don't build today. They built the last centuries, so everything was very well put together, and that is preserved in the basement. So after, like I said, after the Tuckers moved out to Ohio, the Losis took it over. They started expanding the building. Then it became a tavern, post-Civil War period, so it became a very tall, large building, and you can see you have these, you know, jersey cape windows or eyebrow windows on the third floor, and normally, you see those on the second floor. So this was a very imposing building at the time, and it had a lean-to at the side, and we know that from the brick evidence in the basement. And then the Westfield Golf Club took it over around 1899 to 1900, and they, this was the entrance to the pro shop, they built the wings, and this was after the 1876 Centennial. So there was a lot of like, I want everything to look like Mount Vernon. And so as golf clubs were coming into vogue, that's why they added these columns. They wanted it to be a very, you know, like an imposing country club, and that's really the look that we still have for country clubs today. So this is the period of significance when it became the Shady Rest, and we know it was dark red at the time. They didn't paint that, the Westfield Golf Club did. So it was a dark red building, no shutters, it had the five windows across, which now these, a couple windows are now missing. But, you know, we have photos, so this could always be restored in the future. And then on the right is 1964 to present, the Scotch Hills Country Club. Some windows have been removed. These are now restrooms. That's why these windows got reduced. We have this, where the porch used to be on the side, there's now this covered seating area. So this is, this is what the building looked like when the Shady Rest Golf Club took over from the Westfield Golf Club. This is right around 1921, '23. And that's dark red, the color of the building. This is, what I, what I then did was go through each room by room. So we have, no matter whatever happens to this building, there's now a documentary evidence of what it looked like in 2014, and what the condition of every room was. So this will be a document that the township will always have, and people could always refer to in the future day. So this is going around the building. So this is going around the building. Where the little shed is here on the side, you can see some of the original wood siding. It's now been covered over with the vinyl, and you can see that dark red that was painted over with the white. In the basement, this was the original end of the 20 by 26 Tucker 1700s farmhouse, right here. So you can see it stopped right there, and then brick was added on. So if you lived in 18, you know, around the Civil War time, you would have looked at the house, and you would have seen stone on about three bays, and you would have seen brick on two bays. So it was just a building that just got added on to over time, you know. These are more pictures from the basement. The original tin ceiling is still in, what was the bar or the speakeasy in the 20s? So when it was the Shady Rest Club, the bar was in the basement there with the tin ceiling. So you, there was even an outdoor entrance, so you could just go straight into the bar if you wanted. And, you know, I'm sure there were musicians and everything who played down there as well. So, and, you know, it's still, you, you know, it's a nice space. There's probably like 10-foot of head height space. And the tin ceiling remains in areas. These are my guys doing some work, taking a wood sample. That's the architectural historian who was figuring out with me about the two-foot-thick walls. He's an expert at colonial history. These are just documents of the building. This is the kitchen. This is one of Ray's guys fixing a window when I was there. This is the upstairs, which all this insulation doesn't really serve a purpose. You know, all the ductwork has been run up through there. These are some communal restrooms. What's interesting is, yeah, this is what I wanted to show you. Underneath all the insulation up there, a lot of the pumpkin pine flooring from the 1800s still remains. So no matter what happens, that should be salvaged. I mean, that's just something you can never replicate nowadays. You can't go down to Home Depot and get that kind of wood. So this is the third floor, and this is where Mr. Shipman lived when he lived in the Shady Rest. And his bathroom is still there, so. So all three of those pieces have 1921 stamp on them, so it's really neat. These, this is the, this is the old staircase that we think was actually moved upstairs when they enlarged the building. Because on, these are the roof rafters. On half of the roof, you have 1700s roof rafters. They're hand-plained. On the other side, you have more delicately cut wood that obviously dates from a much later period. So what they probably did is they just raised the roof. Back then, you know, there was no Home Depot, so as much as they could, they tried to reuse materials. And that's what happened here, so it's really neat when you're up there. There were surveys done over the years that I gathered. There was at least 10, I think. And the state actually provided me a few that we didn't know about. So we had a structural report. He talked all about the roof and the best ways to go about repairing that in a permanent way. And his prices there, that's material only, as I'll get to. And these are some better photos of the roof rafters. So you can see how some are hand-hewn just with the axe, and some are hand-plained, and they're much finer. So then we had an inspection report done, talked about the chimneys. This guy's a civil engineer. He was very thorough, and he brought along a general contractor as well. This is us up walking on the roof, inspecting the air conditioning units. This is pointing out other issues. There's a sump pump in the basement, so the numerous times I went out there, I never ever saw any, you know, standing water or anything in the basement, which is good. There's a lot of electrical issues. That's the boiler on the right, which was built in 1990, so it should still have another 15 years in it. These are some other issues. So then we did the paint analysis, and what this is, he came out and took some samples, and he looks at it under a microscope. And just on the front, just since 1921, there were at least 18 coats of paint. And he was able to go all the way back to circa 1921 and found it to be this Cherokee red color. And he found the interior to be more of like a creamy eggshell white color. And that would also be on the trim. So actually, today you have like a white building with the kind of greenish window trim and everything. And back then, it would have been reversed. You would have had a dark flabbergasted building with a light window trim. This is dendrochronology, so I had a friend from Columbia come out. And what they do is they drill into the wood, and they take a core sample, and they go back to a laboratory. And he was able to figure out that the pieces of oak that were used in the first-floor lobby were cut down around 1792. These are some more samples he was able to find, 1790, 92. And the 1712 there shows you the, the tree was living in 1712. We know that. If the tree was a young tree when it was used, which unfortunately a bunch in Shady Rest were, they were like 10-year-old pine trees when they were cut down, those can't be dated, unfortunately. You need like a really thick hardwood to be able to date it. But there were some, so we got lucky. This is the asbestos report. There was asbestos in the roof material, which makes sense because it has a cold tar roof that actually dates from the 20s that's been kind of covered over, over time. That has some asbestos, and the worst asbestos was down in the basement crawl space, very, very strong down there. I did a code study, which I won't bore you with the details. So then we did preservation philosophy, and this was just what documents are out there that would guide us in any kind of treatment or restoration process. In New Jersey, we have the Uniform Building Code Rehabilitation Subcode. So that's part of the International Building Code of 2009. And what this is, is because the building has been determined to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, there are certain shortcuts and things you don't have to do to bring it up into compliance. And that's something you have to work with your local building official on, but it definitely helps when you're trying to do a building like this. And then, of course, the Secretary for Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. This is the national record that you're supposed to follow whenever you do any kind of renovation or restoration. So the cost estimate was a big, obviously a big component of this. So we had a report for the asbestos removal of 327,000. It was done in 2007. That was not taken into account in these. And then I was tasked with coming up with a few options based on the 2007 study that was done of this building, which was when it was proposed to become a senior center. But there were certain programmatic needs, space sizes, that the township needed at the time and spent time studying what they wanted to get out of this building, like how it could best serve the public. And so that, those were the numbers I used to try to come up with a way to fit that program into this building. So option A is to keep the building as is, add an elevator, which is one of the major ticket items, and. I'll keep going to find that. This was basically taking the footprint as it is, and we're just trying to fit whatever program in there that we can and restore the exterior to look like those two postcard images. So that would be the idea with this. And you'd still have that large multipurpose space where the fireplace room is today. Option B was, was actually something I helped put forward, which was we wanted to keep the building kind of restored like it was. So this actually pulls back some of the dining room space on the back of the building, restores the porch that you have facing the golf course that you see in a lot of the old photos, and adds an accessible entrance on that side of the building, so we could restore the front to look like it did in the postcards. And then we would have an annex building that would be used for the other township spaces that they required, like, you know, the seniors and the jazzercise and everybody else who uses the building on a periodic basis. This is, option C is what was from 2007, and this was for the new senior center that got rid of the Shady Rest building. In this option, we still said we could keep the Shady Rest building, and for about 135,000, it would be moved somewhere else in the golf course. And because it's wood, that's possible. So that was the idea here. So we tried in none of the options to promote outright demolition. But this option is the largest, 14,700 square feet. And it's on three levels, so it would have a full basement. Option D is trying to reconcile those previous options. On the left there in the middle is the basement, and you can see the historic room has very thick walls. On the right is adding a large multipurpose space on the back, and we would have a very large walkway that goes around, like a porch, to kind of mimic the historic appearance. This one also opened up the three-story space so that when you walk in, instead of feeling like with the low ceiling and everything, we would just get rid of the second and third story because they're very difficult to try to get accessibility to. And so you would just walk in, and it would feel more like a cathedral. You just look up and you see the skeleton of the building. And then this has a large museum component as well. These were the cost estimates, so for option A, and mind you, this includes everything. These numbers are the material costs. So the material cost is almost half of what it would really cost to have contractors, professionals, the township, landscaping and maintenance, every other thing involved, the hazmat. So the real project cost of A came out to 3 million, which is 351 a square foot. And this, this was like a complete rehabilitation and restoration. So this is, you know, removing, you know, redoing the plaster walls. This is redoing the floors. This is doing all-new electrical. This is doing all-new plumbing, heating, air conditioning, everything. It's not, it's not just, you know, what we would say the Band-Aid fix. So that's why it came out to so much. Obviously, it could be worked back into increments if that needed to be done. Concept B, which was the two buildings, came out to almost $4 million, 374 a square foot on 10,680 square feet. Option C came out to 5 million. That's the brand-new building that was comparable to 2007 senior center. And that price is comparable to the 2007 cost estimate. So nothing really has changed with that. That's 343 a square foot. So there's more square footage. That's why it's slightly less square foot price. And then option D, which was trying to reconcile everything but have the addition on the back, came out to 4.5 million. So then under the recommendations, I know a lot of people touched on this already. We have the short-term recommendations. That's from the inspection report. There's a lot of little things that need to be fixed. I know the Parks Department is already trying to fix a bunch of these. Some of these were, you know, critical. Some are not quite as critical, but they would go a long way to fixing the building. So that came out to 50 to 75,000. And then we have the roof replacement option, which is not with a hot tar roof, but with the real built-up battuminous roof with like four or five plots. So you, you know, never have to leak again. And that came out to about $100,000 to redo that. And then we have the capital plan, which is trying to take one of these options or some aspects of these options and move forward and actually get a, you know, everything everybody wants in the township, which obviously, you know, you can never please everybody, but this is kind of restoring the building, so when you look at it, it looked like it did in the postcards. However, on the inside, you not only have your museum components and some kind of Mr. Shipman exhibit, but you would also have, you know, a place for the seniors, a place for the jazzercise, a place for banquets that the town could rent out and make money. So this tried to take all that into account. On the left here is the concept program I was given from 2007. And that kind of breaks down what spaces the township determined it needed and still needs. And on the right is what we recommended, which was D, which was trying to take into account, you know, everything for everyone, which, like I said, is very difficult to do. So this is an overall view of the building as it stands now. You can see how close it is to Jerusalem. So this is a, this is an existing plan on a site plan. So Jerusalem's there at the bottom. Sorry, my laser pointer isn't working. So you can see the front of the house used to face Jerusalem all the way up the street. That's why it's oriented like that. And then this would be how option D would fit on the site. So it would go out the back and kind of wrap around, very close to the ninth hole, I believe. And that's the property line. It's a budding at the bottom there. So this is what the building looks like from the front as it looks today. This is something we would hope to do when you walk into the building. This is what the, on a national level, they're starting to promote more exhibits like this. And, you know, since this was Mr. Shipman's home for over 30 years, obviously, the township should really try to get as many of his, you know, mementos and the history of him and anything associated with him to the building as much as possible to really give it a relevance as a historical museum and destination. This is a three-dimensional view, just kind of showing, I wanted to explain that this idea, when you walk in, that we just get rid of the second and third floor. We could preserve all that wood, bring it down possibly to the first floor. We preserve Mr. Shipman's bathroom set. Possibly that could be moved down to a museum component on the first floor. And that way, everybody could still experience that, including people with disabilities, so that we don't have to put an elevator, blast it through the building, kind of destroying all the historic fabric. And this way, you'd walk in, and like I said, it'd feel more like a cathedral. You could look up, and because it's a wood building, you can do that. You can take out all the floorboards, and it would not affect the structural integrity at all of the building. This is looking back the other way aerial, and then this is what that option D would look like. Jerusalem Road would be on the left. So references, I included as many references as I could, so people in the future would know kind of where the pieces came from. And then for our appendices, I had a land researcher find all the different maps and plaques associated with the properties. This is one from 1882. Then we had the voluminous land records with that chain of title. I summarized it, but in the appendix, if anyone ever wanted to really read it, you know, the 100 pages are there. And this is the actual 1923, one, Westfield Golf Club to Progressive Realty Company, right here, February 16, 1923. This is what it looks like if you, you know, gone to the Essex, you know, Union County Archives. Actually, this was Essex because it went back far enough. And then we have the boiler specs, so this boiler, this will come up. This is a big-ticket item, no matter what happens. But this boiler, Will McLean's a good company, so I included the manual. Hopefully, this could be kept up. It's only 14 years old. Boilers usually last about 30 years. And that's about it. That's about it for the overview of all that we tried to learn, so. And now I know people have lots of questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ross, for a very thorough review of the building. It's clear, I'm certain, everyone in this room tonight that a lot of work went into it. And you shared with us, you know, history that I'm certain many, if not most of us were even aware of, as much as we are aware of the significance of this facility to our community and to the nation for that matter. So with that, I'm going to ask the council first if they have any questions that they'd like to ask Mr. Ross. And then I think it'd be appropriate to turn to, you know, ask our citizens if they have any questions that they would like to ask. And then finally, I think the council should at least entertain a discussion of what next. We have a meeting on the 12th, and one is a conference meeting followed by a business meeting, and if there are some actions that we should consider taking at that time. So with that. So with that, council, any questions for Mr. Ross?
Yeah, could you go back, I heard some discussion from the public before, I know there's a number of different kinds of historical designations out there, National Historical Register, and there are others. Could you give us a little bit of an overview of what the different kinds of designations are, and, you know, which ones this could potentially qualify for and under what scenarios?
Right.
It's kind of an open-ended question.
No problem, no problem. So, yeah, this is definitely a nationally significant building, and there's four criteria for that, and this would meet three of the criteria, which is architectural significance with events, Shady Rest, first African-American country club in the United States, and with significant people, with Mr. Shipman, who lived there for over 30 years. And then D is actually prehistory and archaeology, so not many things qualify for that. So this, this is significant on numerous levels, and as Mr. Price mentioned earlier, he got a certificate of determination from the state last year, and that means the building, they determined, was eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, as well as the New Jersey State Register of Historic Places. And those are kind of lists, and it's important to at least have that determination, because then you can, you can get on the rehabilitation subcode, which helps you, as I said, with certain elements of the building. You can get around, you know, if the railing height of a historic building was, you know, 36 inches, but we're required to have 42 inches today, we can keep 36 inches. So that's, that's a major plus to have when you're trying to rehab an entire building. The other point is, if you're on the National or State Register, let's say there was some federal money, like they wanted to put a, a new interstate next to this, you know, golf course, or they wanted to do a cell tower or something, they would not be able to. So those are its important considerations. In terms of demolition and things like that, the National and State Register don't help you with that. That you have to only do with your local ordinance, so. For instance, you know, there used to be a Scotch Plains Historic Preservation Commission, that's where that protection would come from. So, you have, it, it kind of goes in order. The local has the most power and protection, then state, and then national.
Could you speak to some of the restoration suggestions you've made in this report, in any of those different options, and which one of those, which of those things move us forward in terms of being able to attain some of these registry statuses? In other words, what things need to happen, so that the folks at the National Historical Register would say, okay, you're taking, you Scotch Plains, you're taking the steps necessary that we would give you this designation?
I mean, I think this building's so significant that even if it was like a ruin, I think they would take it, they would put it on the register. It's that important, just because it's, it's the first of its kind, and it's also associated with Mr. Shipman, who was, you know, the first of his, you know, generation and everything. So, because of that, I don't think the, you know, your windows aren't correct, that's not really the criteria for them. It would be if you were trying to get the architectural, but this building has the event significance and the person significance as well, going forward, so. However, if you did like a large, the large addition, then they might say some of the integrity had been lost. That's how they look into that. So oftentimes, when houses or buildings are moved, sometimes the National or State Register will say, the significance has been compromised, and we're going to take you off the register. That sometimes happens. But this building's, you know, extremely important, so, like I said...
In that sense, would you outline an option B, in a sense, is probably the most consistent with the period we're looking to in terms of...
Right. That's actually why I threw option B out there, just because it, it's not attached, you're still getting all that square footage and programmatic use you need, but the building itself could be completely restored on the four sides to what it would have looked like during that period of significance.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I, I have a question. I apologize, first, I'm Connie Jelineella, I want to tell you that I had an unavoidable conflict. I knew that I would be late, I was hoping I wasn't going to be this late, so I apologize to you and to the public. Thank you, this was excellent. I really enjoyed reading it, it was absolutely fabulous. As a former history teacher, it's meant the world to me. I, I, my question is about the building use. So, I, I'm struggling a bit with this inside, and I just need your thoughts on it. You have a building, obviously, with significant, significant historical, you know, value. In your experience, which is obviously far greater than mine, are there cases where it would be typical to have, I mean, and this is not, I want to be very careful, this is not a commentary or judgment on what has happened so far, I'm only concerned about what we're working on moving forward, where we have, let's say, Zumba classes going on in a historic building. It seems, I, I'm asking your experience, is that typical?
Well, I always like to say the best preserved building is the one that's still used or lived in, so.
Okay. So do you, in your, when you've worked with projects like this in the past, what is typically the end goal for those projects?
Is that the building has a use that's relevant, so that you're not going to constantly be worrying, does someone going to go out there and stabilize it to keep it from falling down or not? So that's, that's a major component, that the building is getting used all the time. And so oftentimes, that does mean significant rehabilitation, but just enough where you can still tell that historic story of the building, you don't want to compromise that, whatever's significant about it, you want to keep, but you still want the building to be used all the time. So, you know, if you just made it, you know, a museum, I mean, there's lots of historical societies, you know, and they aren't, they aren't open every day, just for that reason. It's tough to, you know, unless you have an event, a banquet, you know, some, something to draw people in, that's usually a tough sell, so.
There we have a unique situation, right? Because we, we do, you use the property as a golf course, and people need, obviously, to come in and register to use the, just my, so, so you answered my question, you answered my question, I, 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 the historian in me is somehow a little bit perplexed, you know, about how we move forward with this. Thank you, you answered my question, I think, I got some input.
Yeah, and, and actually, that was the first thing I thought, I was like, well, it's a golf course, you know, you need a pro shop and all that kind of thing, but there's that separate building already, so, you know, unless you moved all that back to the Shady Rest Building, and then use that newer building as something different. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ross, again, your report is an excellent report, it's very informative. Thank you for your report, it's very informative. I've been through your report several times to try to grasp as much as I can about all the information. Do you hear me?
No.
Is the microphone working?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a miracle.
All right. I don't want to swallow the microphone, so. I, I do have several questions of you, in no particular order, so let me just ask, as they come to mind here. You mentioned about asbestos in the building, and my, my question is, given what we're looking at in terms of short-term fixes to the building, and then consideration of what else may occur from there, what, what do we need to do? What's your best recommendation in terms of dealing with the asbestos issue? Is that something we have to confront now, or is that not something that we have to concern ourselves with? And if not, when would we?
Right. So asbestos is only dangerous when it's airborne, and the particles can get into your lungs. As long as you don't touch it, you could look at it, it's not going to hurt you. The most asbestos was down in the basement, in the crawl space, which is not anything that we're proposing to reuse at this point, unless you wanted to dig out under there. So I think all of that major asbestos could stay down there for now, until you did a major rehabilitation of the building, and you're going to be, you know, doing electrical HVAC and everything, then it'll probably get disturbed, and that 327,000 that was estimated is going to have to kick in to, you know, they'd have to tarp the building, they're going to have to remove all that and dispose of it properly. The asbestos in the roof can probably be removed, it's not significant, you know, significant amount, but it's, it's in there, just because it was in everything that they used in the twenties and thirties and forties, so. But if we, like, hot-tarred the roof, just to kind of fix all the leakage points, you would not have to do anything with asbestos either. You're just covering over what's already there.
Okay.
So there would be possibly some remediation on the roof to remove, you know, if you're going to do an entirely new roof, to remove some of that.
In, in your report, where you come up with the cost estimate for the roof, just, we'll use round figures, $100,000, does that include any asbestos remediation work that would need to be done?
No, no.
So if, if we undertake that work, and, and we decide, put on the new roof, on, on both the, you know, the main building, the gable roof, and the two flat roof areas, do, if I heard you correctly, we, we then do need to address the asbestos that is presently on the flat roof?
Yes, but I'm hoping it could be taken away in chunks, that we would not have to get into that. But we would have to examine that at the time, yes.
So you, you really wouldn't know what you're dealing with until you start removing the material, is that it?
Correct.
All right. If, if we needed to consider what we might be looking at, if, if we had a, you know, a significant amount of asbestos on that roof that had to be removed at the time of the roof replacement, how much would you estimate that would be in addition to what your cost estimate is in the report?
That I don't know. We would have to get an estimate at the time.
Well, overall, the report suggested that the approximate cost for asbestos removal in the building, and I realize, I know in the report you said, look, you really don't know for sure until you open things up, and you may have more exposure than you anticipated. But, I mean, can, can we, can we assume that if, if we're going to do these roof repairs, that it is, that the asbestos removal is somewhere between, you know, zero and $327,000?
Right, but the significant portions were in the crawl space and the basement.
Okay, okay.
So the bulk of that number would be for the basement remediation, but yes, there would be some component to the roof probably.
Okay. All right, and I believe in your report, you also mentioned that there is some asbestos up on the second and third floors too, is that correct?
There's trace amounts in all of the plaster ceilings and walls.
Okay. I'm jumping a little bit now, because there are a number of questions that I do have, but you, you had that one slide up there, the one photo of what you mentioned about possibly, I guess, opening up, if that's the right terminology, the second and third Yes, that's the one. Is that what that represents, that picture? Can you expound on that a little bit? I mean, this is, can you expound on the proposal and what you may be suggesting, and at what point, if, if we're talking about short-term repairs, including the roof now, is this something that could be considered now or should be considered now, or is this something for further consideration based upon what you may do in the future with the building?
I would do it as part of the capital improvement, that whatever option or variant of an option that you would want to go with, that then this would be done. Because at current, the second and third stories are condemned.
Right.
Nobody uses them, and when the HVAC was put in, they just cut through all those pumpkin-pine floors, so they're already, you know, even if you got rid of all those ducts, you can have all these holes in the floor. So I think you salvage as many of those pieces as possible and possibly move them down to the first floor, where none of the original floorboards exist.
Right.
But this, I, I wouldn't even say this is a huge undertaking, this is just more dismantling, because you wouldn't affect the structure at all. Floorboards have nothing to do with the structure, and this is just taking out two levels of floorboards and trying to preserve them. So when you walk in, you, you'd have that pumpkin-pine flooring when you walk in, but you'd look up, and you'd see, you know, the skeleton of the building, you know, the heavy timber framing.
Right.
And this would also preclude, you know, the need for any elevator to get up there. There's very low head heights, I mean, I've gone over this with the Parks Director numerous times, I mean, we don't even know what possible office or use you could ever put up there, so. And then I think it would be more befitting for this building that you walk in and have a grander lobby museum space, kind of to give this building justice.
Okay. Well, if I could just follow up on that thought, if we are considering the short-term fixes right now, which include the things that you reference in your report in that category, plus the roof, you mentioned the condition of the second, third floor. What is your suggestion about what happens with the second and third floor now? I mean, how, how would you address that space?
I would do nothing with it now, it'd be very expensive, because you're going to have to take out all that ductwork. Right now, it works, at least the building's air-conditioned and heated, and it would just, it would be very costly at this point, without, you know, knowing exactly where you're going to be at the end of the day to try to start doing all of that.
Okay.
So that would be the, my, you know, the future plan, I, I would hope, but not now.
So you're saying just leave that as-is?
Yes, because even now, it's not accessible by the public anyway, and I think the cost now would overshadow all the other items that we were trying to get done.
Mm-hmm. Is there a, some type of, you know, modest restoration proposal that could be implemented to do something with those second and third floors?
I don't think so. I, I would think if you want to go beyond the short-term recommendations, that you try to, you know, I always try to employ a top-down approach, so you got the roof, then maybe you do the exterior, maybe you want to replace some windows, expose the wood clavards back. I, I wouldn't go to that second and third floor until, you know, the, the capital improvement project has been discussed and vetted, and, and everybody's on board with.
Okay. You mentioned about, you mentioned the term hot-tar the roof, and then, of course, you, you talked about just installing a new roof. Can you explain what you're talking about when you referred to a hot-tar, hot-tar roof, and what that involves?
Right, so hot-tar roof has been popular for many decades. The Shady Rest Building was originally done with a cold-tar roof back in the twenties, and unfortunately, that did have a little bit of asbestos and other environmental concerns with it, so it's been outlawed, you can't do that kind of roof anymore. But, but like asbestos, asbestos is a wonderful material, and a lot of things they did back then, like the cold-tar roofs, held up 50, 75 years easily, as this roof, you know, did. It, it really did live out its life. Then what happened is, people started using the hot-cuttled tar to kind of cover over bare spots, and in New York City, they don't even allow that anymore, so insurance underwriters have kind of cut that out, and now they've gone to other materials like temper and sideblast. And what we're proposing here was a built-up roof, so there, instead of fiberglass, it's battuminous material, and in the structural engineer's recommendation, he said three, but we talked in, you know, if you could go four or five, that'd be even better, because the more layers you have, the more protection you have. And then you have to protect all your penetration points in the roof, so where the air conditioners are installed, where, you know, vent stacks from the restrooms are. All of those are penetration points that you have to very carefully flash and cover up, so there, you know, you won't have any leaks. So the hot-tar... So the hot tar can be used now. I checked with the building department and it doesn't even require a permit, so that's a perfectly acceptable way to maintain this building for now. But in the future, you'd want to go to a more modern roof. There's EPDM, which a lot of people use, but we thought that that would be a terrible use here at the Shady Rest because it would mean you'd need catwalks everywhere because an EPDM is a membrane that's very, very soft. And if, you know, one of Mr. Poreo's workers were up there and they dropped a hammer, it could literally go through that membrane. So we don't want that. So that's why we, we thought the four to five ply built-up, the tuminous roof would be the best option here. And that does have a slight pitch, so. But the structure of the building, the, the actual ceiling joists here were in excellent shape, shockingly, so.
Now, with regard to the, what you just described, the hot tar versus the permanent roof. What you described about the hot tar, that, that is clearly a short-term solution, that is not a permanent solution.
Correct, short-term, yes.
The permanent solution would be to put a new roof on the building. We know that there are two flat roofs there. In reading your report, I'm trying to just understand, you know, it's been described to me that one of the reasons why there's, there's been a problem with water penetration, leakage, et cetera, is because of the fact that it's a flat roof. Now, if you install a new roof on the present flat roof, is that going to have some type of pitch to it so that alleviates the problem, or could you explain that?
The roof actually does have a slight pitch. It's just kind of been obliterated over time with all the patches, so. If you took it all up and went back to the structure, I think you'd be fine. That was actually my question to the structural engineer too. I said, you know, how much more structure? Are we going to need two-by-eights, two-by-tens, two-by-twelves to kind of build this up? And he said, no, you just got to get rid of this, you know, all these patches over the years, this, this like, you know, chunks of stuff. Get rid of that and you start over again.
Okay.
And then that will have a slight pitch. And you don't need much of a pitch to get the water going off. You just have to have, you know, good gutter systems, leaders and downspouts to get rid of it when it gets to an edge.
So you're saying then that a new roof will solve that problem?
Yes, without new structure and everything, right.
Now, with regard to your, your options that are in your report, I realize you've, you've set forth several different options, you know, that's all open for discussion, whether that's, you know, anytime in the immediate future or some later point. The question that I have for you is if, if we as a governing body said to you, Mr. Ross, we've got, we've got X amount of money in our budget to apply to further renovate or expand or improve the building, whether it's three million, whether it's four and a half million, whether it's half a million, three-quarters of a million, one million, is that something that you could work with and put together some type of proposal to, to improve the building in some way?
Right, so like I said, it's always best to go top-down in these kind of situations. So you would go roof first, then I would suggest doing the exterior before the interior, so you would try to expose the wood clavards again and, and, you know, fix the exterior so it looks like how you're going to restore it. So new windows, new doors, new gutters, everything. And then the interior, you know, a lot of the big-ticket items were the gut rehabilitation things, the electrical plumbing, HVAC. So if you don't do those, you keep the current wall configurations. I know I've discussed this with the Parks Director as well. You could, you know, possibly do a wood floor to get you through a few years, a new wood floor or something, new carpet. You could do, new lighting would dramatically improve the space. So there are things like that that would not hopefully break the budget.
Okay.
That's possible.
Can you go into a little more detail? One of the things that I read in the recommendations, there's mention of the foundation. And in reading the report, you note that there are some issues with regard to the foundation. Can you get into that a little further? I'm sorry for not speaking directly into microphone. Can you get into the issues with regard to the foundation further and describe the, the condition of the foundation of the building, what needs to be immediately addressed with regard to that, if anything, and anything else that you would mention about it?
So the foundation was in better repair than we expected. The oldest parts of the building obviously are two-foot-thick stone or about 12-inch-thick brick, like three widths. None of that is leaking, none of it's cracked. It just needs to be repointed at some point, but, you know, you could probably get away with not doing that in the next couple of years. There was no standing water in any of those parts of the basement. Probably the worst part of the foundation was around where the chimney was in the multipurpose space. That would need to be probably reparched, there were some cracks there, but nothing structurally significant. The only aspect the structural engineer made note of was where the old building meets where the dining room is, you know, where the original golf club was expanded out the back because you have, you know, 10-foot dug down next to like eight-foot dug down next to like, you know, just a crawl space. So in those locations where you have all that elevation difference, there, there was some, you know, possibly, you could just do it with a two-by-four wall though and just kind of support that. But overall, the foundation was in better condition than we were actually expecting to find.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear. With regard to your, your recommendations, if we look beyond just the short-term immediate needs that need to be taken care of, and then we, we look at what you have in the section you refer to as capital, are, are there any particular items in that capital section that are more significant than others and you would prioritize to address perhaps sooner than later or perhaps even now?
Yes, exactly. There's items in there that if there was more money in the budget, we would pull out as priorities that we knew would not change no matter what option went with. So, like I said, the wood clavards on the outside, especially the front elevation windows, like we would restore those to how they looked in the postcard. Those would not, you know, ever change after we put them in. Obviously, the handicap accessibility there in the front, if we could move that to the side and, and restore that whole front entrance, that would be very good. So the chimneys also, I put that in the capital. The chimneys need to be rebuilt down to the roof deck. So they, you know, they were parched. Unfortunately, when they're parched, the bricks behind them are not repointed and they get water moisture damage and they start to disintegrate, you know, because it's just clay.
What does that mean, parched?
Parched is where they take like a, a wet concrete and just kind of cover over everything, which decades ago they thought was, was preferable because they wouldn't have to go out there and repoint each individual brick. But in retrospect, it wasn't a good idea and it's preferable not to paint or even brick, just to take care of it, repoint it, so. So the chimney was another big-ticket item that could be moved if you wanted to rebuild those to their historic appearance. So yes, there's numerous, I would say, exterior fixes that could be done now that, you know, because no matter what, you're not going to build an addition on the front of the building, so definitely the front elevation could easily be restored back to how it's going to look, no matter what happens, we, we know that, how we would restore that, so.
Having said that, do you have any ballpark figure that you could perhaps give in terms of those items that you mentioned as part of the capital program that you would prioritize?
Right, I mean, if I had to throw a number out there for what I was just describing, I'd say, you know, in the three, four and a thousand dollar range for exterior improvements such as those.
Okay.
You know, a window, a wood window alone is 2,500 to 3,000.
All right. Now, we talked earlier about the asbestos. I note in your report, there's reference made to lead paint also in the facility. Is that something that needs to be addressed as part of the short-term fix or is that part of the capital?
So because the building's covered in the vinyl siding, it's tough to completely ascertain what condition the clavards are in that are under there, the wood clavards. And then there's, once you expose them and see what, what's going on with those, I mean, they're all there. We were able to poke a few holes, there already are some holes, so we were able to see. Then there's two theories of thought for how to restore those. You can just paint over them, in, in such case, you do not need to remove all the lead paint. You're basically encapsulating it by painting over it. The other is a complete paint stripping, which costs more money, but a lot of people think it preserves the wood better for the long term. You know, it already has, what I say, 18 coats of paint or something on it, so you're going back to paint coat one again, so.
Okay.
And, you know, you can take off all the paint, all the, but then, yes, the lead would have to be abated, but then you can sand all those clavards down again and they're almost brand-new, so.
I guess, again, the same question, would you be able to give a ballpark figure about, you know, either option? I guess the first option really would not be that much, you're saying just paint over it, but if you do the preferred option, what ballpark figure might we be talking about?
Yeah, that's a, that'd be a tough one to say. I mean, it's a big building and it's a lot of wood clavard, so, I mean, that's probably 100,000 right there just for the wood clavard, not including windows, doors. And that's assuming that, you know, most of the ones that are under there can be salvaged, so we're not going to buy all new clavards.
Right. I think you've answered my questions for now. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you both for the work that you did here, but also your presentation, I think, was a very good overview. It's a lot of information to digest, but I think you hit the good, the high points. Obviously, from this report and from your conversation and from the questions back and forth, this is breaking into a, kind of a two-phase project. One is immediate remediation and fix to make sure that no further damage is done to the structure. Because most of the components that might have been damaged previously that I've been made aware of are vinyl and, you know, ceiling tiles that aren't part of the original or are the historical building. So the structure of the building, I think, is what is the most important at this point and the, and the pumpkin wood as well upstairs. So if we look at this from a two-phase perspective and we look at the, the first remediation phase, obviously the largest component of that is the roof. Because of the buildup, as you described, on the flat roof and deterioration over time with the winter that we just had, for example, with three feet of snow and a freeze thaw cycle that went from warmer temperatures to single-digit temperatures all within a span of three or four weeks on and off, if we were to do a hot tar application to those flat areas, is there any way to predict that that would still, that would, if we had another winter like we just had, prevent leaking or, or problems?
Not 100%, but I think it would be a under-five-year fix. So I think you would, you know, prevent the major leaks, but it would only last a few years. But yes, it should last.
So year one, let's say we're looking at phase two a year from now to start. Year one, what percentage would you say that that roof would maintain its integrity with the hot tar application?
Above 90 for the first year.
Okay. So then the next option is obviously replacing the roof with a more permanent solution, which includes some unknown estimates for some asbestos abatement and so forth. But my question would be if, if we decide to go into a big phase-two capital program and we put a permanent roof on today, would that permanent roof need to be modified, removed, changed in order to accommodate any phase-two capital program? Or would you do all of the work underneath it without having to disturb the new roof?
It's, it's possible parts of it would have to be disturbed at a later time. And that also, that goes to what Councilman Marcus was saying as well, like if you want to do the clavards and everything now, or you want to do that later, if you come back and do that later, you know, where the roof meets the wall, you know, you're possibly going to have to redo part of the roof as well. And also, you know, obviously if there's any kind of an addition needed, you know, where that abuts the building, you're going to have to redo the gutters and, and leaders and downspout systems in that location as well, so.
Well, obviously, the reason why I'm asking that line of questioning is because I don't think it, based on your input, I'm, I'm trying to determine whether it would be wise to put a permanent roof on now, if indeed we plan on doing more to the, to the building in the future, or if it will be the minimus effect. I mean, you're saying some, but, you know, obviously if we're, you don't want to spend 100,000 on a roof and then have to turn around and spend another 40,000 a year later because you want to do, you know, future capital work on, on that building.
Right, I mean, we know the major footprint of the historic building wouldn't change that much, so the, the gable section would never have to be revisited, but the, some of the flat roof areas, were they abut any kind of addition, were they abut any kind of wall change? And the other big thing is, let's say you put the new roof on, you, with a capital project, you're going to want to redo all those air conditioning units on the roof, so you're going to have to take that into account, that you, you're going to have to possibly patch it in areas when you get new machines and units up there, so.
And of course, as we know, anytime you start patching a roof.
It's not good, yeah.
It's, it's a hole, a hole eventually leaks. So then my, my next question is with regards to these options, I'm trying to get a sense of how they evolved for you in a little more context. I mean, obviously, the one where we tear it down, which was a previous plan, I would never support, so no need to talk about that. But how do you, how, how did you, were you told this is what, these are the components, these are the uses, and then you used your creative architectural abilities and came up with what they might look like? Or were you given specific instructions on what to do?
So no, I appreciate the manager and the Parks Director for giving me leeway in that sense, but they did give me the program and said, this is what we need, we've already studied this from seven years ago. So what I then did was, yes, I tried to come up with, how could we design this better to fit as much of that program as possible, to make this as relevant as a building as possible without obviously losing any of its historical integrity? So then A was a given, that A would be the same footprint that exists today, just restored or renovated in some sense and possibly phased as well, like, you know, maybe the exterior goes back to restoration, what it looked like, but the interior, we would have to, you know, gut walls to fit in different spaces that, you know, weren't, weren't relevant for today's needs, so. And then option B was actually more of my idea because I always find it preferable not to attach to a historic building if you can, because you're going to lose obviously some of that, you know, just, you know, just discerning what, what was original and what was his, you know, what's new because you have many additions, just like now. It was a, you know, puzzle to unravel, what was the first part? What was the first part, the second part, the third part? So, that's why we tried to move into some annex. Maybe it could look like a barn for the building or something, to that effect, and move a lot of the newer program spaces that are needed into that, and we could keep the older building more like it is. Option C, obviously, we all know. And then Option D was actually trying to address all the concerns from everywhere because we didn't know that it'd be efficient to have two separate buildings, where in the winter, you're going to be going possibly outside between the two. You know, you're going to have separate systems for each building, so it might not be the most efficient use of the square footage. So, then, it became, "Well, how can we get all that space in here?" And that's when we decided we'll show an option bumping out the back, where there is some space, and having a very large banquet room out the back.
One last question. The use of the building in the current day was brought up earlier. I think the reference was to Zumba. When it was the Shady Rest in your historical investigation, when it was the Shady Rest Golf and Country Club in your investigation, did you come across any evidence that perhaps they had dinner dances there? And that dancing took place in the building?
Yes. We know that they had parties in the building.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what the relevance of that is, but...
Excuse me, Mayor. Could you get order in the room, please?
I'm about to speak, if you don't mind, Councilman. If you would allow me to conduct the meeting, I would greatly appreciate it. One time, maybe. Thank you, everyone. It was a request by Councilman Bastine that we restore order to the bill through the room, which I believe we have without any prompting. I appreciate everybody's input. Deputy Mayor, I certainly appreciate, you know, the thought that you put into your commentary. And certainly, you went to great lengths to review what had been proposed, and you have legitimate questions. Well, we're all going to have legitimate questions. And clearly, we don't have a plan, a long-term plan, and we're not going to have a long-term plan tonight. Nor, I suspect, will we have one for weeks, maybe months to come, which is what my commentary, my questions are. When we first met Mr. Ross, we talked about the future of the building. And we said, "The future of the building is right now. And the best thing we can do for this building right now is to preserve, protect it, get a new roof on it, and shore up the deficiencies that are in it, and allow the debate to continue." You know, a lot of license was taken to take you in a different direction, and I appreciate all the work you did. This council's resolution that was put forth and voted unanimously for was for you to evaluate the building and tell us how you could restore and preserve it. Nothing in the resolution called for these extraneous options, as I see them. And having seen them and having spoken to some people, people, some folks find that this is a throwback to prior administration's efforts to gut the building, to build a community center, and to not respect the value of this building. Now, I can say that because I saw, I saw, I'm not saying, because I saw the plans. I mean, there were plans that were done. We spent thousands of dollars on a plan, and I think we even have copies of them still. But that said, we need to move forward. I think it's everybody's intent to preserve and protect this building and to bring its integrity back. But, winter's going to be upon us soon. The idea of doing quick fixes again with hot patches, to me, is ludicrous. We've spent thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, I'm certain, doing quick fixes over the past ten, fourteen years. Enough with the quick fixes. The future is now. This building has a conscience of its, or a soul of its own, which took it through last year's winter, which I think Councilman Bastine referenced, thirty inches of snow. And yet, when you did your investigation, I guess, you know the old saying, "They don't build them like that anymore." The building stood. Now, I can see many, and I'm certain all of us in this room could see many great plans. I was unaware that Mr. Shippen's bathroom fixtures were still there. I mean, it just amazes me. The work that you've done, what you've uncovered, is such a great service to this community. But, as I said, the future is now. And this council, I'm going to request, act upon shoring up the exterior of that building now, meaning the roof, the deficiency, the code problems. That six-to-twelve-month plan has to be enacted and has to be approved by this council. And, yes, to Deputy Mayor's point, we need to tighten up some of those numbers. We certainly need to tighten up some of those numbers. And recognize that going forward, there's another plan behind this, okay? And maybe it is that A plan. But I've sat on this council for eight years. One thing I'm certain of is that we'll never get there before the winter. So, we need to take immediate action. We need, and it was, as was recommended, to bring someone in like yourself to oversee, my opinion, my recommendation, someone like yourself to oversee the renovation, the restivation, restoration of that six-month plan, allowing this council, allowing the public to weigh in on the future of the Shady Rest. I mean, again, Deputy Mayor, you did your homework, and you brought up a lot of points. But the fact is, it's August 6th. We won't meet again until the 12th. Anything we do, and I have a background in facilities management, I can tell you. Mr. Ross, you know, we've got to go out and bid. Mr. James, you know, there are certain rules and regulations about that bidding process for those six-to-twelve-month plans. And that's going to take time. And I'm looking you all in the face, telling you, with our best efforts, we're going to be lucky to get a roof on there by October, if we begin the process now. So, we have a lot of grandiose plans. I think we're all on board, one variation or another of them. But the future is now. Roof has to get done. We need to fix the deficiencies in there. And simply this, if we don't start now, I can pretty much assure you, from my professional experience, thirty-five years in facilities management, we'll be going into the winter in the same situation we are today, and that would be outrageous. So, that's my questions to you. You're nodding in agreement. I think you have a very thorough background of facilities management, and I suspect that, while you're not commenting, and I'll allow you to comment, that my estimates are not that far off. So, with that, I thank everyone's thoughtful comments from the council. And I would ask, and I'm conducting the meeting, please.
May I just ask a question?
No, may I finish? You're interrupting me once again.
Sure, before you go to another section, I just wanted to ask a question.
But is it a question of me? I would prefer, you've had your chance to speak. We've all spoken. We're not to have a debate amongst ourselves. I think it's time for the public, who's been waiting for years, as Mr. Taylor had waited at the beginning in the open session, and the public comments, "When is it going to happen?" So, we've asked our questions. In fairness, I ask you, if you have any questions or any final commentary on what you think we should do as a council.
Mayor, if I may, please. May I ask you a question?
You know what? Please.
I don't know if anybody else was under the understanding that that moment in time was there for us to make our comments as opposed to a question?
I ask questions. And, no, I, you asked your questions, several of them. I asked a question. I believe Mr. Ross pretty much was nodding in agreement with what I was asking him, and I just made commentary that I think we all are supportive of them, unless you're not supportive of it. You know, I don't want to make reference to a piece of documentation, Mr., I'm speaking.
I was speaking before you interrupted me.
A documentation that said, "The minutes will reflect" that you made commentary at one of our meetings earlier that we should put a roof on in 2017. It's in the minutes, it's in the notes.
That's not the point, right now, Mr. Mayor, I was asking your question.
Point of order, I'm not recognizing you, I'm recognizing the public. So, does anyone have a question?
So, you're not going to allow me to speak, Mayor?
No, I'm not recognizing you. You had your chance to speak, sir.
We had a chance to ask questions, not to give commentary.
Mr. Bastine.
You were the only one that took the chance to make commentary. I think we should all be given that opportunity.
People looking again. We would expect you, for once, to be civil.
It's, excuse me, this is not about being civil. This is about people having the opportunity to express their opinions.
Mr. Bastine, there's someone at the mic. Mr. Perry, would you please give us your comments? Thank you. Once again.
Mr. Ross, I know...
And your snide comments are inappropriate, Mayor.
I missed, Mr. Jones asked a question. I'm a little confused. You've got A, B, C, and D. At what point of those different options is the historic preservation, I mean, the historic designation compromised? Obviously, if you're going to tear the building down, there's no need for it. But, I mean, is it, is it Option A or Option B?
Option A and B would be fine. Option C, demolition, obviously, would not. And then Option D would be what you'd call adaptive reuse with an addition.
Yeah, but it wouldn't.
Possibly.
It could possibly still be listed on the historic register?
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, please? Thank you, Mr. Perry, for coming forward.
Thank you for this opportunity.
I need to have your name and address, sir. Thank you.
My name is James McCauley, Five Johnson Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey, of course. I grew up right across from the golf course. And as a kid, we used to hit golf balls from my yard onto the golf course.
Could you just leave Sarah close to the mic so that the people in the audience can hear you?
All right. How was that? Better? Okay. As I was saying, I live very close to the golf course. As well as a great many of my friends. So, it wasn't unique that you hit golf balls from your yard to the golf course. I mean, of course, you had to come across Plainfield Avenue, it was a road. I mean, it's a very dangerous practice, and... Okay.
I don't think it's working well. Please, continue without interruption. If I ask it without interruption, then you continue. Please.
Well, I'll be very brief. As far as short-term solutions, they have a short span of life. And, I mean, you, as a homeowner, you know, I can attest to that, you know? If, you know, why do it twice? Because when you say "short-term," you don't know if that's one year, two years, or three years, you know? So, whatever you have to do, do the best job you can and hope, you know, and prepare for a longer life rather than, you know, these short-term solutions.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think the definition the architect was using for "short-term" was not "short-term" meaning "short life." It was not a quick fix. It was things that had to be done, should be done immediately, that have long-term, you know, consequences to improving the building.
Okay.
But it's a reasonable question. We're not, we're not looking for quick fixes here. Short-term does not mean quick fixes. Short-term, I think Mr. Ross was referencing or tending to convey, was making fixes that are long-term, but doing them in the short term, doing it now.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. May I?
By all means.
May I take one more minute?
You may take another minute.
Much has been said about Mr. Shippen, you know, all the accolades and, you know, of his life and his contribution towards golf. However, one of the persons that have been overlooked here is Mr. Willis. Mr. Willis was the owner-operator of the golf course. And long before anyone in this room knew about the works and the history and accomplishments of Mr. Shippen, Mr. Willis knew about them. And it wasn't a case of Mr., you know, Mr. Ship, as we refer to him, finding Shady Rest. Mr. Willis went out and he enlisted Mr. Shippen. And as well as the big-time entertainers, you know, that came here. I mean, the big-time entertainers, Count Basie's, the Ella Fitzgerald, I mean, they weren't up-and-coming. They were stars, you know? And somehow, Mr. Willis, you know, got him to come to Scotch Plains and to Shady Rest. Now, Mr. Willis, I'm not going to paint him as being, you know, very warm and fuzzy, you know, because he wasn't. But he was very, very community-minded. He extended the club to Jersey Land residents. I mean, we had affairs there that we couldn't, that wouldn't accommodate us no place, you know, in New Jersey, or maybe even on the Eastern Seaboard. I'm very close to, I can remember, we used to have these, like, debutante dancers and, you know, of all ages. And in fact, I, that was the first time I'd ever danced with a girl that wasn't my mother or my sister. And, I mean, I have many fond memories of the place. And in summertime, on a night like this, you know, before air conditioning, you had your windows open. On the weekends, when the big bands came down, I mean, you know, it lit up the whole place, you know? And again, I mentioned the kindness that Mr. Willis showed to that community because, like I said, you know, there was probably no other place, you know, that I could think of, that some of the activities that we had there. And I believe most of them, you know, came at no cost or no charge because we didn't have no money to pay, you know, for a building of that type. And it gave a lot of us an opportunity to make a few bucks caddying, you know, on the golf course. And one of the things that wasn't mentioned here, that a lot of people may not know, there was a clay court. There was three clay courts there. And it was an arena, you know, bleachers built around the clay courts. And it would accommodate maybe two to three thousand people. And on many occasions, every summer, he would have the, I can't remember the name, but as a result of this affair, the top African-American tennis players, you know, would be attractive, and they would come from far and near. I was about ten years old when I first saw Althea Gibson. And I think she was about, I guess she was about seventeen years old. She was a young girl. And I believe she was probably a better tennis player then than when she won Wimbledon.
Gentlemen, please.
Okay. But that was my recollection. And, but one of the things that I would like to see, that Mr. Willis, you know, get more recognition than, that he deserves. And because without Mr. Willis, there wouldn't have been a Mr. Shippen, you know, coming to this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I've got to tell you, the contributions I am aware of, of Mr. Willis and others, that were well documented in Mr. Lindino's documentary of the Shady Rest. And clearly, I think it's the intent here of recognizing Mr. Shippen for being the first American pro golfer on the circuit, but as well to recognize Mr. Willis and others for without which there would have been no Shady Rest. So, you're absolutely right. That's why we come together. And if I had... And if I had a wish, I would love to restore some of those tennis courts.
Carolyn Perkins, 861 West Field Road, Scotch Plains. Mr. Ross, you are to be commended. I went to the library and I had requested that. And Mrs. Bassino provided the entire document at our reference desk. It was several hours reading, but you are an amazing person. No one could have asked for a more complete report. Now, last, a year ago, last August, we talked about this. We talked about it. We were gonna get an architectural report. It is now a year later, okay? The architect report has been sitting in the office for a couple of months. We talk about the snow in October. Well, I'm telling you all, Irene came October 29th, 2011. Superstorm Sandy came October 30th, 2012. That did more damage to more people's homes and properties than the snow on people's roofs. So you have your work cut out for you. I give you all a pat on the back for researching and asking your questions. But you know what? The time is now. Just do it!
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, for your comments.
I have to say my name again? Tom Donatelli, Tax Circle, Scotch Plains. If we all had Mrs. Perkins' talents at the microphone, we wouldn't have to worry about hearing and et cetera. So maybe you can give some lessons down the road? Mr. Ross, can you review for us that portion of this proposal about the six-to-12-month plan, which would be immediate fixes? Can you give us that in detail, step by step, what would have to take place there?
Okay, so there's many items listed here. Some are minor, most are minor, actually. They are just kind of maintenance issues that were discovered when we did the inspection with the civil engineer and the general contractor. And that was that portion of this report. So they have replace flashing at chimneys, all flat roof areas. That's what we've been discussing. Remove plant growth, the drainage, clear all the downspouts, replace other downspouts. This is all part of the roof work. Ground all existing electrical connections, verify grounding. Cover, conceal all open junction boxes, other exposed wiring. Check the fire alarm system, security system. When you're down the basement, it, it used to continuously beep every time I was there that there was a problem. But Parks Director Poreo knows all these, and he's actually already been working to fix a lot of these minor changes. The short-term roof would be hot tar. That's, that's just the short term, but that's what we've been discussing. Conduct an underground oil tank search, the entire perimeter of the property. This is because there's, there were definitely some oil tanks that were concreted over, over time. We have to find those, remediate them, remove them, and dispose of them properly. And actually, I was already giving Parks Director Poreo some contacts to do that. Fire inspection certificate. There was a tree that was very close to the fire hydrant. Mr. Poreo already had that removed. There's a metal cargo box at the back of the building. He's gonna take that out. There's wood fence guards. That's part of that front entrance restoration. We have wallboard ceiling failing. That's gonna be replaced. There's exterior light fixtures that are out. Mr. Poreo's guys are already working on that. There's missing soffit boards. They're already working on that. There's exterior window shutters damaged and should be removed. That's part of the window restoration, if, if that goes ahead and is now. Otherwise, that's part of the capital restoration project. Missing, uh, there's some light fixtures that were out. The kitchen vent hood at the rear of the building, there was an obsolete one from, obviously, an earlier one. That'll be removed. There's the one foundation crack, that's what I was talking about. But the rest of the foundation was actually in pretty good shape. Some exposed live wires, more flashing. Downspouts need to be extended six feet at the bottom, so it doesn't just go down, you know, to the grass at the foundation and just seep back in. There's no French drain around the building to remove that water. It should really be hooked up to the town sewer at some point. Algaecide at the main roof shingles, that's if the roof is not replaced. All chimneys are deteriorated. A level-two chimney inspection. There's three big chimneys. They all need to have a camera, you know, video camera, goes down each chimney. There's a couple of water leaks in the basement, but the sub, some pumps were working properly. There's violations with the water heater, violations with the electrical system. Those are already being worked on to be addressed. The boiler, which I provided the specifications for to try to maintain it, otherwise it has to be replaced. There's, the lobby doors don't self-close. That's an egress life-safety problem. Remove all carpeting. It needs to be replaced at some point. Dining room egress door, again, doesn't, didn't close properly. Water-damaged dining room ceilings. Mr. Poreo's guys periodically repair that. They even had to repair it after I punched a few holes trying to figure out the structure of the building, but they did replace them. And then there's, uh, there's ventilation system problems in the Lacy Ballroom, which is the, the large room. Second, third floor, we've talked about that. Some minor hand dryer issues at the first level in the bathrooms. One other minor basement leak, egress door, the kitchen. Portholes at the kitchen, we determined is not an issue, so you can scratch that one off. Repair the kitchen sink. I mean, that, that goes to what you wanna do with the building. Does there need to be a commercial kitchen there to, but at the time, you know, all the support should be fixed. And then more electrical receptacles that Mr. Poreo has already fixed. They had reversed polarity. So it's a lot of minor things besides the roof, so. And then we have other system issues that you can fix and maintain now, but obviously, with any capital improvement project, all of that's gonna be gutted out and redone, so.
Quite a few times you said that Mr. Poreo's guys are working on this now? So is this a proposal to the town council to take this plan on, or is something being done without the town council's approval? Or does the town council have to approve every little thing that happens?
No, a lot of these are just maintenance issues.
Mayor, say it again.
The county council wants to speak.
Uh, no, the council doesn't have to approve every one thing. I mean, I've said that for maintenance issues that we're working on anyway throughout the course of the project. And the bar, they haven't involved. I would say a lot of the minor things were, I would say, a lot, I don't know, all of them, but a lot of them are in progress at this point, as far as monies are concerned. A lot of them, a lot of them can be handled with the monies already available in the township. You know, with the budget, we can pass capital bond ordinances. So, no, I mean, what tonight is, and I've said, what is this? I'm not sure we were going with that, but what tonight was, what basically presented the county with the plan, the rate of anything else there.
Hello? Um, well, we received the report from Barton. Basically, we went through many of the thoughts that, uh, really, in the short term and long term, I mentioned, but we go ahead and do the draft. I basically plugged that into an Excel spreadsheet and go through each one of those items. I reviewed this with our neighbors, supervisor today, Mark Ham, the informed, you know, following things that have been implemented or we have been implementing back. Replace flashing at the chimneys on wall climbing areas that's been done. Blue wall plant growth and drains, clear downspouts have been done. Replace with other downspouts, extend the way we bring that, something that will be decided ever going to be done with the roof. We do the roof, then we do the gutters, then the downspouts have caused. So that kind of all in one package together. Any open junction boxes, we brought the electrician in, we walked through the building, evaluated all the electric. All the junction boxes, as well as any, we have, we've had a very, very, um, fast done. Fire, check all fire alarm systems, security system connected to the central station basement, that's done. Hot tar, flatting areas, prevent the heat from water ponding. Again, that's been, you know, the main, uh, what to do with the roof. Have secured a quote to go ahead and get that done. Um, I guess, uh, ultimately, the decision shortly, uh, the management, the head, what that, that cost estimated is about $14,000. Conducted an underground oil tank search for the entire perimeter and property. Barton gave me an estimate on that of $1,000, we were contacting the original. That can come out of the system as a matter of fact, according to, uh, the board. Get current fire inspection, that's just the yearly thing. Once you do the fire inspection, comes in the dust act. That's been done since back in the time. Tree that, the tree that is three feet, but isn't fire hydrated, that can remove that guy. Tree service, we will, we will, we have cargo box, shipping container at the rear of the building, that's done. Prepare to replace the wood fence board in front of the basement level, that's completed. General pair interior gypsy wall door, that the wall we see being as necessary repair. Again, you wanna go ahead and fix the ceiling first, or the roof first, by whatever method that you choose, and then we'll go ahead and finish that. We've done some of that already. General pair, replacement of the interior next to the lights, the lights have been fixed on the building. Replacements in soffit boards, again, ties into that whole roof project, gutters, soffits, heaters, associated with that. That we've, I remember, we've done some of that this year. Kind of called the council to do. Secure light fixtures, the arrangements that have been done. The new biopsie, kitchen vent hood at the rear of the building, actually referred to as a bird's nest. Remove the bird's nest, we're nearly moving, moving, heading south. Because if you do that, that may ultimately mean that we now have to do the new wood behind it, and then you side it on top of it. So that's something that we'll hold off for now. Repair the die foundation crack, we may send it along. The boxes are open, closing that currently. Expose the live wire on the inside and put it in the conduit, that's done. All downspout, the red pump pad, the hush pond. Use the algae side of the main roof shingles, move side, again, tie it back into the roofing. Quite frankly, if you look back into the report, it says that a lot of, like, fibers for that kind of has a word, aren't pure on that asphalt shingle roof. So I don't want some guys up there to do that. Ultimately, that would be covered when we do the roof project. Wall chimney materialization, level-two chimney inspection recommended by a licensed chimney specialist. Again, Barton gave you quotes for that, or contact information for that guy, that estimated cost is around $2,400. The water leak in the water meter room in the basement is a clean-up and address that has been. The water heater in the basement has a huge cold violation. I'm not sure how that happened, because the water heater typically inspected, although it's called a plumber in the bar. The building is, the building electrical system has numerous cold violations, we're sure of it all, it's been done. We may have been told to do, replace the panel inside of Scotch Hills that's outdated. My understanding is that will be done next week. The 14-year-old weld-on plane wood board, we have a regular old service suite. That's something that we've been going back and forth with in the 14-year, about eight years, we've had about six different times come in. Some say that's how, uh, boiler, that tells, once it heats up, it weakens some, like an old car, and then seals itself. Some say we can replace it. This past year, we didn't have any problems with, you know, associated with it. Over and upon, we've got it once again. The service, the main lobby entrance door, subgrowth, egress, again, that, that's done. The blue wall of carpeting, that's something that we're already talking about today, and I think that kind of ties into what capital planning, what you're looking to do as far as getting the next phase, that councilman or deputy mayor have referred to as well. The door issues, we're talking about it too. Compare the wooden damage in the dining room, again, that ties back into the roof. The ventilation in the recent wall room, we found out it was just a, it was a break that was off. The third floor, the second and third floor of the main house requires total restoration, that's a larger capital item. Service the electrical hand dryer on the first floor, the men's bathroom on the other floor, where the new one, or the process floor, and the new one. Install, install the porthole at the kitchen, and we talked about, there actually are portholes in both of those floors in the kitchen. And again, the countertop tied back into the capital, larger capital item. So the majority of items that are on this list have been completed.
Now, can I ask this question? It seems like that Mr. Ross said, "This is what needs to be done," and you're doing that. And you're doing that within the scope of what your capabilities are within this township. Why can't you put the roof on next? That has to get put on, and you know it, and you keep saying it. Why does anybody have to vote on it, or think about these grandeur plans, and all kinds of things about a building that nobody really wants to see? Millions and millions of dollars of renovations and modifications? All we're looking for is that what you're doing get done, and that a roof gets put on so that what you're doing stays done, rather than leaking again and affecting the electric and ruining the wall boards that you keep putting up over and over? And isn't that roof part of the, that, that budget, or that one ordinance that you guys passed back last August, I believe it was, or September, that you appropriated $139,000 or something?
The roof costs expensive enough to be subject to local contract law, and would absolutely be voted on by the council. There are ordinance that we did, it was purely financial housekeeping, it didn't improve anything, or didn't improve quotes. So because you're looking at close to $100,000, you're absolutely bidding requirements, that requires absolutely no further.
So would you like to step up? Okay, thank you very much. That was very good of what you did. Thank you, Mr. Poreo.
Mr. Giles, can you, uh, hi, this is Sylvia Hicks again. Can you go back through that again, because I'm missing something? The $138,000 that was passed September 2013, um, it states here, "Through the undertaking of professional studies and of various repairs in improvements to the Scotch Hills Golf Course Clubhouse by and for the Township of Scotch Plains." So the repairs that Mr. Poreo stated that he's now done, thank you, Ray, um, is that a part of $138,000? Or, I mean, where's, I mean, where's?
No, up to that, up to that, all those repairs were minor, and we took them out of the operating budget.
Okay.
The, the item of the, the item of the roof, even though you pass a capital budget, this is within any ordinance. Second part of it, the first part is the passage of the ordinance.
Right.
And then there's a, ultimately, when you go to procure those services, or you bid those services out, if it's above our bid threshold, which is the 17.5.
Right.
Then that then needs to be voted on by council. But as, as an example, you know, one of the quotes that we received for, like, a hot tar roof, that's under 17.5. An item like that doesn't have to be approved by council.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
But because the dollar kicks it above that 17.5.
Right.
The ordinance is the funding mechanism.
Right.
Then one ultimately, whether it's a roof, or a car, or whatever it may be.
Yeah.
Then that then goes back on to council after it's been bidded, and then they have to vote to approve it or not.
So basically, the $138,000 really has not been truly been spent or used?
Outside, to the best of my knowledge, outside of the architectural study.
Right.
Where Barton's down.
Because that's a part of the $138,000.
That came, that came out of that $138,000.
So we got a lot of change left, huh?
We need a confirmative now.
Um, Mr. McCauley, to address you. Once we get everything done, and like Mr. Ross had alluded to, that we are looking to form some type of museum within the Shady Rest. Mr. Willis is a big part of that. And between Mr. Ross and myself and Ms. Ethel Washington, we have already secured a lot of articles and data about Mr. Willis, so he'll have his own little spot right along, along with Mr. Shippen. Mr. Vastin, just so, just so, this is the house band for the Shady Rest. So yes, they did have a lot of dances there. And, and also, we also have secured some glassware and dishes that were used at that time.
Nice.
We also have, we also have a gentleman. We also have, we also have a gentleman looking for a silver tea service with the Shady Rest logo on it, that his aunt has hopefully, I hope he hasn't thrown it out. But no, the house band, they were awesome from what I was told. I wish I was back, I wish I was there back then.
Thank you.
Barton, of course, you and I have talked about this a lot. I just thought, I don't want to take up too much time, I just thought it would be important if you went over again for a couple of minutes, the importance of, when you do a project like this, of doing it step-by-step in phases of, as the mayor said, not just doing another quick fix on the roof, of addressing the roof completely. And as the historic preservation architect, you would play a vital role in the bidding process and bringing in contractors who have experience doing this kind of work on these kind of buildings, because that's very important also.
Yes, you definitely need a contractor experienced in historic buildings as much as possible, especially for the gable roof portions. But we would be doing, like, an asphalt shingle roof on the gable portion to save money, and actually, that's what it was in the 1920s. And, and yes, it's very important to have a historic architect deal with buildings like this, because there's just so many parameters, and you never really know, to Councilman Marcus, what he was saying earlier, sometimes when you cut open parts of the building, you don't know what you're going to find, and you have to be prepared for that. So it's a lot of give and take and change orders pertaining to what is found, what is actually found, when we actually, you know, for instance, take the roof off, like, how much asbestos is really there? How much remediation do we have to do? Is the wood structure really in good shape? Those are all questions that, obviously, working with historic buildings, you have to be ready on the fly to take care of, whereas with a new building, architects don't have any trouble with that, because they just put up what's there, and they just spec it, and they don't have to do much, so, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ross, sir?
John Thompson, Redwood Road. I have a question about the asbestos. You indicated that it's only an issue for extraordinary remediation if it's in a highly powdered and aerosolized state. In all your probing of the building, did you observe any asbestos that was in that kind of state?
Yes, there's visible asbestos down in the brick portion, the 1830s portion of the basement. It's up in the crawl space where the lean-to on the side would have been. I mean, it's clear as day right there, but as long as you aren't, you know, touching it, it's not an issue. So if there's no work being done there, I would suggest saving that $300,000 and putting it to better use for the moment, until you have a capital budget and program.
Any places that were powdered asbestos on the roof?
No, not in the roof, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Shirley McDuffie. I am a homeowner at 823 O'Donnell Avenue. I came here today, I thought I was coming for a different reason. I wanted to learn about Shady Rest and the restoration. I agree with the mayor. I think personally, with people going on and reiterating things, it's not going to get the problem solved. We need to decide, as the mayor said, now, I don't know if it's just council that makes the deciding factor with going ahead, okay, but then, if that's the case, I don't know if any of our comments are going to matter. But I'm going to let you know, as a homeowner, and you take my taxes, I pay my taxes. I think, you know, instead of going through this whole humdrum, you did a wonderful job, Mr. Ross, we need to get the roof fixed. And that should be the thing on the table, and let's get it done before the winter. Let's get acting on it right now.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay. All right. One more time?
One more time.
I just want to revisit that part about this amount of money, and this is, I just want to ask you. The roof, we don't really know how much it's going to cost. Did anybody get a quotation yet on replacing the roof in the fashion that he feels it needs to be done in?
Your estimate speaks to that, right? His estimate speaks to that, to the $94,000.
$94,000. And again, we keep going back to this $138,000 or $139,000. Explain to me why the roof can't be put on with that money that's been appropriated. I don't understand why you keep dodging around that.
I'm not dodging around, sir.
Okay, okay. Well, explain it to me so that I can understand that that money's not going to be used for the roof.
Nobody said that.
Okay.
The ordinance that was passed last year, that $138,000, all that did was rename an existing bond ordinance. There was an existing bond ordinance that said that that money was supposed to be used for something, I don't, the zoo, maybe? I don't, I think it was the zoo. So what the council did was, in order to use that money for something else, they have to vote on changing the title of the ordinance. That's all they did. It was a financial housekeeping rule to say, in the event the council in the future ever voted to put a roof on it, they can now use that bond ordinance. So now that bond ordinance is allowed to be used for Shady Rest repairs, up to and including the roof. Now, next step. That doesn't mean, as the manager, or as the rec director, or the recommission for that matter, we can just go ahead and approve it. We still need a vote of the governing body to do that. We still need to go through the public contract process, where we put together an RFP based on this recommendation. We submit it out, the contract, we wait to require a period of time, and, you know, get the bids in, open the bid, or seal bids, award a bid at another council meeting. So it takes two agreements to do that. I had said a couple of months ago at a meeting, council gives me that direction, I'll start tomorrow. But I never got that direction.
I appreciate, can I understand, I understand thoroughly now, from your explanation? And now, I ask you, sir, why can't you guys come up with a, what do you call that? Make a motion at the next town council meeting and vote on putting the roof on? And if everybody's in favor of it, why can't you guys say, "Next Tuesday night, we would like to put a roof on The Shady Rest, and we would like to say that this $94,000 proposal is on the floor from this architect." Why can't you say, "Let's do it, and let's get bids, and let's get underway"?
I don't think that's unreasonable. And with that, seeing no one else behind you, I would like to make a motion to use the monies. Am I not allowed?
No, there's no action being taken at this moment.
Well, we just had a work, oh, this was, I apologize. I would, I will make that motion.
We can do it tonight.
No, no, it's a workshop. I, you know, we say, "Thank God for Bonnie." But you're on the right track, and unfortunately, I misspoke. I misspoke.
This is a public representative, as a workshop, it is advertised, and no formal action would be taken, which means no formal action is allowed for people to take our regular meetings that is allowed.
On the 12th, and I stand corrected. It was wishful thinking. We don't have many workshop meetings, and Mr. Giles, thank you for clarifying that, and certainly, Ms. Lucina as well. But you can know what's going to be asked on the 12th.
Tuesday's coming, and I watch every meeting on TV, and I'm on the computer now, and that's a nice feature, and I hope to see that come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, I apologize for getting ahead of ourselves, myself, but I think "ourselves," I comfortably would say. We expected this meeting to be less than two hours. We're two and a half hours in, and I think we've expressed ourselves. On the 12th, we have a conference meeting, Mr. Giles, Mr. Ross, that I think you all should sync up on, finalizing maybe the short-term costs with the idea of putting as an option a new roof on, as has been alluded to several times today. And so I hope you'll be prepared to discuss that with some more finite, more reasonable numbers, to Deputy Mayor's point, you know, better to check now. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight.